So Andrew, you can flip in the camera angles.
Okay.
Go wild tonight.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. I'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for the City of Campbell, May the 10th, 2022. Madam Clark, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rivlin.
President.
Commissioners Zisser.
Here.
Commissioner Ostrowski. Commissioner Kamkar.
Yeah.
Commissioner Clay.
Here.
Vice Chair BookFinder.
Yeah.
Chair Ching.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we don't have any minutes to approve for this week. Okay, so just moving on to communications and modifications, postponements, Director Reese Wood.
Hi, Robbie Sturick, you're the director. The only thing I have, I forwarded to the commission an email I got from the Audubon Society. They had spoken at the last meeting and forwarded some written correspondence. Other than that, no additional communications or agenda modifications or postponements.
Thank you. Moving on to all requests, this is a point on the agenda where members of the public may address the commission on items of concern to the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. People may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning commission. Don't see anybody in the audience. Do we have anybody? On Zoom?
We do. Nancy, would you like to speak under oral requests?
No, thank you. I'm just listening.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll close our request section. Moving on to the public hearings, we have two items for tonight. Before we start with these items, do I have any disclosures from my fellow commissioners?
Yes. On item number two, I spoke with the applicant or appellant probably at length, 20 minutes regarding his topic. Didn't make any decisions and will hear his item this evening.
Thank you.
Also, for the second item, I live 1,600 feet from there about in a straight line. That's, I don't have to accuse myself, but I thought I would mention that I live not that far away.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I've had email communication with, for item number two, I've had email communication with the appellant and and that's basically it.
Thank you. So with that, I'll move on to the first item for tonight, which is PLN 2022-23. Public hearing to consider the request of Jose R. Rosales Palos for property at 136 North San Thomas Aquino Road to allow the onsite sale of beer and wine beverages, brackets liquor establishment, in association with the existing restaurant, brackets DBA, Tus Tacos Taqueria. The application under consideration includes a conditional use permit file number PLN-22 just dash 2022-23. Staff is recommending this item is deemed categorically exempt under SEQA. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. Project Planner, Senior Planner, Daniel Farmer.
Thank you. Good evening. Item one is an application for a conditional use permit for property located at 136 North San Thomas Aquino Road. This is the Santa Moss Plaza. The subject tenant, as noted, is the Tus Tacos Taqueria located at the northerly end of the most easterly building within the shopping center shown by the arrow. This is an approximately nine acre shopping center that is located within the C1 neighborhood commercial zoning district as well as the corresponding neighborhood commercial general plan land use side district. The applicant's proposal specifically to allow sale for beer and wine in association with the existing restaurant operating under a type 41 ABC liquor license. The existing configuration of the restaurant as shown at the ride would remain unchanged. Operational hours are proposed 10 a.m. to 8:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 9 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. In order to approve a conditional use permit for what is termed a liquor establishment, the planning commission must make some additional findings in addition to those that are generally applicable to conditional use permits. The first three generally have to do with issues of nuisance that tend to be associated with alcohol beverage service. As noted in the staff report, through imposition of general operational standards, such as the requirement that alcohol be served in conjunction with food and the lack of late night hours, the first three findings can be easily made. Now, with result, with regard to the last finding in terms of not resulting in over concentration, staff did provide pretty extensive background and analysis of what that terminology means. Just in summary, there's sometimes some confusion in terms of how that term over concentration is applied. The state ABC does have a similar concept that sounds similar in name as it routines to their licensing mechanism. That mechanism is based on population and census tract. It's an entirely different concept than what the city looks to in terms of over concentration. The full finding regards the, in the vicinity. That terminology is not defined with the zoning code and over the years, the planning commission has looked at that terminology in different ways. Sometimes the simplest way is to simply draw a radius of 1,000 feet. Sometimes we've looked at block by block. Other times we've looked at the boundaries of a specific or area plan, as was done about three years ago with the Desi Restaurant where the surrounding vicinity was defined as the boundaries of the East Campbell Avenue Master Plan. In this case, however, staff is recommending that the planning commission look at the shopping center as a whole as the surrounding vicinity. That has some background with the Prune Yard, which was defined as the vicinity when the Prune Yard Master Use Permit was adopted in 2016. So the table here shows the relative number of liquor licenses per acre. And as you can see, with approval of the requested license, the Santa Moss Plaza Shopping Center would have three liquor licenses within the nine acres, approximately one license per three acres, which falls within the middle of the city's shopping centers. Some centers have fewer licenses and some, including the Prune Yard, have many more. So finding that the city council previously determined that with the Prune Yard that the number of licenses of approximately one license per acre was appropriate and consistent with that finding. Staff does believe that the proposal for this applicant that would only result in one license per three acres would also be consistent with that finding. Therefore, our staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow the sale of beer and wine within the existing restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Questions for Daniel's staff?
I did see on the screen the hours at ending at 8:30, however, in the conditions of approval, it references slightly different on page two or four within the conditions of approval, it references 9 p.m. Does that? I don't have a problem with either of the hours, just wanted to confirm which we're approving.
You would be approving the hours that are within the draft resolution. Sometimes we do typically just try and round out the numbers a little bit to provide a little more flexibility. But if the commission feels that it'll too lax, you can certainly constrain them as part of your motion.
So we would be approving 9 p.m.
Correct.
The conditions. Thank you.
Just for my own edification on this, we haven't done liquor license stuff before. We give approval. Do they also have to get approval from ABC or does our approval basically?
No, so ABC still needs to grant their own approval and that approval is contingent on city approval. So before ABC will grant the license, they do double check with our department.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Thank you, Chair. So today, when I was visiting the site, I noticed the back parking lot, you know, is pretty secluded and it's near some homes. Is there any concern about activity that could happen in the back parking lot? Is the police department okay with granting this application?
Yes, the police department is copied down all requests. They did not indicate any concerns here. We did include some additional language with regard to glass bottles, since glass bottles can tend to create some noise issue. So any bottles that go into the trash need to be placed in the garbage no later than nine o'clock. So that would be kind of the endpoint. And if we did get any complaints from those residents, we would be able to remind the applicant that they need to make sure that the bottles are out before nine.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that this kind of vagueness puts you in a difficult place in that you have to come up with some objective way of describing what over concentration means. I guess my question is, does this method count parking in kind of an odd way? The, of the nine acres that make up the shopping center, it looks like most of them are parking lot, right?
Correct. And that would be the case really with any shopping center, but also really downtown Campbell as well, which does include parking lots and of course streets.
I suppose that, like, I I suppose I'd be more curious as to how this would compare in licenses per like thousand square feet of commercial space or something like that. But I guess that would be more difficult to figure out. That was the only note I wanted to make.
Thank you. All questions about the public hearing? Didn't see anybody online. So closing it and opening to the commissioners. I'll start on the right hand side since I'm looking in that direction to.
It's straightforward. I don't have any major comments. I think it's acceptable the way it was presented by Daniel. Thank you for the detail around the plaza and the distances. And I'd be fine with 9 p.m.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with this area and I'm familiar with numerous taco places. And, you know, probably should be a requirement that there shouldn't be beer with tacos. From my perspective, it is, but, you know, I think it's fine. I think the, the, the planning commission, the, the plant, planners have laid out, you know, the, the usage in terms of concentration well. Appreciate the, the information and it seems perfectly reasonable to, for them to have a liquor license in this area.
Thank you. Commissioner Clay.
Yeah, I live nearby. This is fine. No, no problems with this item.
Everything seems okay with me.
Thank you, question.
As I understand it, the concern the city has is that we would have late night rowdiness and bar hopping and I don't think a restaurant that closes at 8:30 in a strip mall is going to cause that. I concur with staff. I, I would lean towards approval of this.
Thank you. Do I hear a resolution?
I'll make the motion that a resolution on a planning condition of the city Campbell granting approval of the conditional use permit PLN 2022-23 for 136 North San Thomas Aquino Road to allow the onsite sale of beer and wine beverages in association, in association with an existing restaurant doing businesses, Testasco's Taqueria.
Thank you. In a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clark?
Commissioner Rivlin.
Aye.
Commissioners Zisser.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Clay. Vice Chair BookFinder.
Aye.
Chair Ching.
Aye. So that is carried and the, that is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. So thank you for that. Moving on to the second item, PLN 2021-70. Public hearing to consider request of Nicholas and Andrea Key for property at 705 El Patio Drive to rescind the listing of a designated structure of merit from the historic resources inventory. File number PLN-2021-70. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed categorically exempt under SEQA. Tentative city council meeting date, June 21st, 2022. Project Planner, Daniel Fama.
Thank you, Dan. Once again. So item number two is a request by the homeowner to rescind the historic listing of his property at 705 El Patio Drive. Now, this property is located at the easterly terminus of El Patio Drive. It was added to the city's historic resource inventory as a structure of merit in 2012. It is an example of Spanish colonial revival structure built in the 1930s as part of the Rancho del Patio tract that consists of this neighborhood. Now, the applicant has submitted an application last year to do an addition to his home. That addition was scheduled for review by the historic preservation board. However, prior to the meeting being held, it came to staff's, staff's attention that unpermitted alterations had been made to the building. Those included a removal of the box form columns and reset windows, application of new stucco that resulted in the loss of the original texture, creation of a new arch feature over the entryway and new connected walls extending from either side of the house as shown on the before and after photographs on the slide. Following discovery of these unpermitted alterations, staff did require preparation of a historic analysis by the city's architectural advisor. This report was intended to ascertain whether and how that structure could be backed, could be reverted to its historic appearance. And if so, if that structure would still retain sufficient historic integrity to remain on the historic resource inventory. The report is included in your packet. Generally speaking, the consultant determined that the loss of historic integrity should result in the city considering removal from the historic resource, then resource inventory in as much as that without that integrity, it does not, does not satisfy the necessary criteria for listing as a structure merit. Staff does concur that maintaining the property on the HRI would diminish the importance of the list by effectively diluting the importance of other properties. And as noted as well, the consultant did identify though reconstruction of the facade is technically possible. It is not advisable in this particular case as it would simply be a representation of the original appearance. So in that regard, staff is supportive of the applicant's request to remove the property from the HRI. However, staff does recommend that that removal be subject to a fee in lieu of property restoration, which again is not appropriate in this case. So specifically a fee of $45,000. That fee would be the sum of the design and consulting cost. We have an estimate prepared by the city's historic architectural advisor as well as a estimate prepared by the city's acting building official for the hard construction cost minus a 15% adjustment factor that takes into account some overlap between these two estimates. And that takes you to the $45,000 in lieu fee as proposed. As staff believes that the imposition of this in lieu fee would further the city's obligation under the certified local government program to enforce appropriate state and local legislation for the designation and protection of historic properties. It would also support general plan policies and strategies, as noted in your staff report and excerpt on the screen in terms of designating and protecting historic buildings from unpermitted alteration and demolition. Therefore, staff does recommend apologies for that, that the planning commission at the board take the following action to adopt a resolution recommending that the city council rescind the designation of 705 El Patio Drive as a structure of merit, subject to payment of a $45,000 fee in lieu of property restoration. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Starting, Commissioner Clay, questions?
Yeah, Daniel, yeah, just trying to wrap myself around this one. I'm having a little trouble, sorry to say. So if so any owner of a structure of merit wants to do any kind of remodeling on their house, they have to do some kind of special application with, with historic.
Correct. So the structure is a merit. There's a two-track permitting process. So minor changes such as modifying a window or a material to a building can generally be approved by staff. More significant changes such as an addition or are alterations to materials that are part of the character defining features of the structure do need to be reviewed by the historic, historic preservation board. Either way, there is some print permitting mechanism that at least allows the city to ascertain whether or not it's appropriate.
But there is, so there are some kind of, let's say relatively minor work that you have to do, that, that you would have to take an extra step that you maybe would not have to if you did not own the structure of merit.
If it's generally, if it's generally minor, generally only building permit would be required as it would be for any other house.
And in this particular house, you know, and I know, I know, we don't, probably don't like to do this, but you know, in, in theory, if the, if the owner had wanted to make some kind of improvements to their facade like they made to the front, could they have done that and still maintain the historical integrity of that building?
Maybe one component, maybe. It's hard to really tell since everything was done at once, but generally speaking, the overall intent is to really maintain the front facade as it currently exists or occasionally to restore it back to its previous appearance if there are sufficient enough records to document how it had looked in the past.
Okay. And as I understand it, most of these structures of merit, the property owner has actually even applied for that or, or was, was in on the process from the get-go.
On the more recent additions.
And the more recent. But now if you have bought a home and it's a structure of merit, it's already a structure of merit. How are you supposed to know that that's a, a structure of merit and what the rules are regarding that?
Well, the real estate community is aware of the city's historic resource list and that is something that we do try to make them aware of to the point where they should advise prospective buyers. And so we do occasionally get inquiries from buyers or potential buyers to our office asking about whether or not the property is listed and what that means. And then we advise them.
So it's just kind of up, up to the Realtor and then homeowner to kind of know that they're a structure of merit.
It's a due diligence issue. Now, that notwithstanding, the homeowner here would still have need to obtain a building permit for the work. And so an application for a routine building permit would have.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, that's what I meant from my original question. I know they had a, looked for the permit for the addition on the back of the house, but for the work that they did in the front, they would have, they do need to apply for that work.
Correct.
Okay, I didn't ask that correctly.
And so that the lack of that permit application meant that we didn't have an opportunity to intervene before the work was commenced.
And it, and I guess, so if you do own a, a home and you know it's a structure of merit, then you should just know that there's extra steps that you should have to take when you do any kind of remodeling.
Correct. So you would.
As general knowledge.
In a similar way as if you lived in the Santa Moss area, that there's a plan that has this special guidelines in terms of architectural appearance.
Okay. And I did notice that, you know, down the street a little bit, that 649 El Patio was also a structure of merit and they, they've done some updates, I think, on the front of that. It looks very nice and new and stuff. There was no issue with, with, with that.
Well, that work actually predated the listing.
Oh, before it was a structure of merit.
Correct.
But it was still, it was still named a structure of merit. So
It was.
Obviously, then the, the structure of merit, this is still there even after that work.
Correct. So it was the planning commission, city council and historic preservation board did find that irrespective of the work that had been done several years earlier, that it still satisfied the criteria for listing.
Okay. And, and just my final question, and I read your report and it's a good report. There's a lot of stuff here, but basically the city doesn't have a process for dealing with a situation like this.
Correct.
And we're kind of making it up on the fly and we're kind of guestimating the costs and, and using the in lieu fee as a legal way to, to kind of get around, not get around, to handle the issue.
In the future, we would like to create a specific mechanism to establish a fine similar to how we do it for removal of protected trees.
Would be, would you, did you consider waiting on this item until that had been established before moving forward or is that?
It would not be legal to.
It's too late. Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kamkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So um, I wholeheartedly understand staff's position. You know, we've got to do things within the guidelines and within the rules, you know, that's, you know, I as an immigrant, I think that's the, that's what sets our country apart from other countries where here rule of law has to stay, you know, um. The only problem I have with the way.
Is there a question there?
Yes. If you allow me. Thank you. Um, the only uh, question I have is, I want to know how that uh, how uh, the methodology as to you figure what the design costs are and then you want him to pay that to the city, even though the city didn't do the design. Then you calculated the construction costs. You want them to pay that to the city, even though the city didn't do the construction. So um, if you had said he needs to pay that fee to, let's say, to some nonprofit group that takes care of historical issues, fine, you know, I would understand. The problem I have is, is why should that money go to the city? Had you said we would have had um, inspection costs plus fees. That's, that would perfectly make sense, for example, the tree that you mentioned, but I don't quite understand. Uh, you know, why would, why should city get the money if that's how you're calculating the cost, you know, and, and maybe that's a legal question. I don't know, but that's just something that's, I can't resolve in my mind.
So the fee structured, it may mean a different circumstance and might have been appropriate to compel the property owner to restore the building. So for example, if the El Patio neighborhood, if it was a historic district like Alice Avenue and it had more surviving homes of the style and all those homes contributed to the general neighborhood feel, then maybe in that circumstance, it would have made sense to compel him to bring it back. In this particular case, it doesn't make sense to do that. So instead of compelling him to restore it, which would have been the normal practice, we are asking for a fee in lieu of restoration that's equivalent to that cost based on the estimates provided by our consultants and acting building official. Now, if the city council agrees, then that money would be put into a special fund dedicated for the preservation of historic resources in the community. So it would not simply go to the general fund. It would be a restricted account.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reverend. I, I was going to ask if it goes into the general fund, but that's been answered. Thank you.
Shocked with the fact I have no question.
Thank you. Question. Apologies that this is already uh, answered, but the applicant who um, if this fee has been assessed against, are they the people who applied to have this listed or are they a different owner? That was a prior owner. Okay. So it sounds like in two thousand and twelve, there was an application to have this structure listed as a structure of merit. But when um, we investigated it this year, it turns out that was the wrong decision. Um. How did we get it wrong the first time?
No, so in two thousand and twelve, the property looked like it does on the left.
I'm now saying that, that now with the alterations, it is no longer a structure of merit worthy.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense. Uh, that explains what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. Um. What, what does it mean if the property isn't rescinded?
I'm sorry?
What does it mean if the property isn't rescinded?
If it is not rescinded, then it remains on the historic resource inventory, which presents some of an issue since it would no longer really has the historic integrity to be on the list. But otherwise, it would still be subject to all the permitting requirements applicable to an historic property.
Okay.
I would just add to that. Um, if you.
No, never mind.
Okay. Thank you. I just said one, one more, um, or two, actually, hopefully sure ones. Um, just clarify on my understanding, was a building permitted, uh, permit pulled for, for the alterations? Uh, I, I missed what you said.
No. So, so. Correct. So the, the lack of a building permit application meant that this work began without the city being aware of it.
And, and that's how the city didn't have the opportunity to inform
Correct.
Mr. Key that it's a historic listed building. Okay.
Exactly.
And the other one, you may or may not be able to answer this one. What's the cost to the city so far of processing this appli- application and all the yeah, time spent with the historic preservation board and everything else?
Um, I don't know offhand, but he did pay for the request. There is a fee associated for the rescission request.
Thank you.
Pleasure. Um, the, the bit I was going to ask was, could you describe what the process would have been to do this the, the right way if the applicant um, started with, I have a historic, I have a historic designation. I would like not to have that, so I could put the arch in my doorway, et cetera. Uh, what would have been involved in terms of like, do we have a process? And if so, what's the, the cost and discretion involved in that?
Well, it would be effectively the same process to get off the list. There, this is the process to get off the list. You go to the historic preservation board, they make a recommendation to the city council. We go to planning commission, you make a recommendation to the city council, and then the city council decides the matter. If the house was unaltered, then absent any new material information from two thousand and twelve, it's likely that the property would still be historic. And then the recommendation would most likely have been that it should not be removed from the list. Now ultimately, that's a policy decision for the city council to make and they could have made a decision as they see fit.
So it's, it sounds like it's entirely possible that apart from the city council making a, a sort of discretionary decision that this may be the only way to get this building unlisted?
Perhaps. And we did have a request uh, three years ago for our homeowner who wanted to make some alterations to her front porch on her historic house. And she felt that the limitations of being on the list made that challenging. So she went through this process and was ultimately denied by the city council, who instead advised her to work with staff to see if there was some way that that porch design could be modified so that it was still consistent with this sort of guidelines, which she ultimately did. So in this case, uh, he could have certainly had some ideas how to maybe modify the, the front of the home. And we, staff along with this our preservation board could have maybe worked with them to see if there were some way that we could accommodate some of that desire, not necessarily all of it, but some of it, while still being consistent with the guidelines.
I think I remember that portrait. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kray.
I'm just, Commissioner Bookbinder asked a question I was going to ask and it was answered, but let me uh, and I'm, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth there, I'm just trying to figure this out, though. So in the great majority of times that anybody would apply before they've done any work and they own a structure of merit, the great majority of times that they would apply to get off that list of, has a structure of merit in order to do some work, you would say that probably they would be denied.
Correct. I mean, the city has already basically asked and answered the question, is the property historic? Hence, it's on the list. So absent any new information, there's not necessarily reason to change that determination.
I, I don't, just don't know a lot about this historic stuff, but let me ask you to put Jenna's spot again real quick. Uh, is, is being an owner of a, of a structure of merit uh, for the owner, is it a positive or a negative or neutral? I guess in some ways it's a positive, in some ways.
That's a value.
You know what I mean?
It's a value judgment. It's a value judgment.
Well, it restricts, I, it's valuable in that you, you own something that's been acknowledged as a, you know, historic prop, which is really cool. But, but if you want to do any kind of work, you're kind of, you gotta be careful. Okay, I, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so uh, they mentioned another property that's just down the street that was put on at the same time, six forty nine. Uh, do you know off the top of your head if there are other uh, houses in that neighborhood that are also on the list?
There are. I don't know how many, but there are others, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have my question. Uh, could you confirm my understanding if this wasn't rescinded? Um, and the owner wanted to carry on doing extensive modifications on it? Um, there's actually no ramifications for him. There's no real penalties, meaningful penalties as the city ordinance stands.
Well, I mean, we, we currently have a situation where we have a property that underwent work without a permit. So at some point that needs to be resolved. So if the, if we go through this process and the city council declines to remove it from the list, then that would likely mean that the way to resolve it would be to in fact resort back to its previous appearance as shown in the left. So then he would need to prepare plans to do that and actually perform the work. And that would be that recourse. There's really no mechanism for him to just stay on the list and keep altering the building.
What, what's the penalties if he did?
No, I.
Um, it, it would be a continuing code violation, municipal code violation, which could subject him to penalties of up to a thousand dollars per day for as long as the violation continues.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so continuing that question, would, you know, if, let's say it continued, you know, and so for whatever reason, you know, they decided not to, would there at some point be a cloud on the title, you know, as far as fees that are owed to the city?
That could happen as the uh, uh, the penalties can be assessed as a lien against the property.
To, in the, in the worst case.
Yeah, in the worst case, if they go unpaid, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And um, on September twenty second, there is a historic preservation board uh, agenda item. And I have a question about the resolution that they adopted. Did they assess the, or fi- make the findings to assess the restoration fee or in lieu fee? Because the, the recommendation from staff doesn't include that in the agenda item.
Well, the historic preservation board recommended removal from the list subject to a five thousand dollar in lieu fee.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. No more questions. I'll open it up to the public hearing. Please, Mr. Key.
Thanks for allowing me to be here. Um, really great, great questions going around. I would also invite some of those.
If you're sure of the record, could you state your uh, name, please?
Yes, my name is Nick Key. I'm the owner of seven oh five El Patio Drive.
Thank you.
Um, I was saying I would invite some of you to ask those same questions to me and get a different perspective. If you didn't feel like you got sure answers on them, I think I can provide very clear answers on every one of those that were asked. Um, so feel free. Um, I think probably some background is warranted here being that I think there were some discrepancies in the understandings. And so I'm happy to do kind of a brief recap on some of the history of this property. As we've all heard, it was added to the inventory in two thousand and twelve. Uh, to answer, I think Andrew's question, there were originally six properties, almost identical to mine, within the neighborhood on El Patio Drive. Uh, one of those was Bulldoze a number of years back and Huge Mansion was placed on that. Um, two of the other property owners uh, denied being on the historic inventory list. So really, when these were added in two thousand and twelve, it wasn't a matter of, to answer Adam's statement about um, these being applied to be on the list, none of the folks had actually applied to be on the list. They were lobbied by the historic preservation board to actually join. Um, so two of the remaining homeowners uh, declined that. One of them, a friend of mine who actually spoke up at the last historic board meeting, uh, agreed to it and he was very regretful of it. And I'll go into pros and cons of owning a historic home is, uh, as you had talked about, Mike. Um, and then the last one, six forty nine, that somebody had mentioned, uh, was also added to the list. Um, interestingly enough, that was previously owned by Mark Sannibal, who is the city's uh, historic advisor and who wrote the report on this. He had never actually added it to the inventory when he was an owner, uh, because he's probably aware of the obvious cons uh, against, you know, adding a home to the list. Mine in particular, interestingly enough, was not either um, approved or declined by the previous owner. She had just said, you know what, I'm indifferent. And in fact, if you look at the packet that was provided by the city, it was eventually added after a number of hearings by the historic board. It was added with the caveat that it could be removed at any time. And so that's in the packet that you have in front of you. Right? Um, so anyways, it is where it is today. Uh, my wife and I bought the property in late two thousand and nineteen, I think it was November or December of two thousand and nineteen that we closed on it. Uh, we had been within that very neighborhood for five years prior to that. We owned a different house. Um, and so we were very fond of the neighborhood, so much so that we moved two hundred feet down the street. Reason being, we love the community we live in, we love our neighbors. Our objectives when buying this property was to take it from what is fairly objectively an unattractive home on the left and provide aesthetic value to the neighborhood, increasing property values as well as truly expand it dramatically in order to account for our growing family. That is still our intention at this point. Um, in the last historic board uh, meeting, a number of my neighbors spoke up on the matter and said how much value that we have provided to the community by uplifting its aesthetic appeal. Um, and so there's, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's an objectively better house than it was previously. I understand that is not the objective of this hearing to decide if it's better looking or not. Um, but it has added value to the neighborhood. That was our first objective. And what we had done as part of that, in fact, um, was number one, we immediately went to the city for permits to actually pour a driveway on the property. And so I think that demonstrates my willingness to actually go through the proper channels when I'm aware of things that need permits. Obviously, that's not always the case. I would challenge any of you to know the, you know, ordinances, what's required from, for a permit backwards and forwards. Um, obviously, uh, you know, to your point, Realtors are supposed to uh, educate us as buyers on, on what the responsibilities are of owning a structure of merit. In this case, we hired a very cut rate Realtor that uh, is, is very prominent in this particular area. And he did not let us know what some of those responsibilities were. And so we were a little bit blind by it. Um, but I did show that I'm willing to work with the city through proper channels in terms of pouring that driveway. At that same time, I also asked the city uh, for permission and even submitted drawings of the front hardscaping that I did along with the driveway, which included that six foot stucco wall that's now attached to it. And I said, hey, do I need a permit to do this? You know, huge stone wall. They said, no, as long as it's six feet, it's the same thing as a wooden fence. Doesn't matter. You could go ahead and build it. And so again, I went to the city for advice on what to do there. As part of that process of building that wall and stuccoing it, my builders also re-stuccoed the facade of the house, the front facade, right? Just to make the texture match across the board. Now, again, I had no idea that I needed a, a permit in order to apply stucco to the front of a house. Um, it's just re-texturing, right? Um, in, in my mind, that's effectively, if you had a wood sided house that was dilapidated or, you know, or rotting, replacing the wood to it. I just replace the stucco. Um, the other changes are, are noted in Mark Sannibal's report and more concisely in the building officials quote that Daniel had already presented. And it's also included in the packet. Um, very, very straightforward, the work that was done and cited by the building official is simply, um, well, is simply, and he, he, he just kind of re, uh, re-engineered, reverse engineered the work that I've already done. He says, replacing the stucco, reframing the columns, you know, the fake little trim pieces that you see there. Um, and then replacing the windows. So those were the other pieces of work that I did, right? I mean, the, uh, the building had the original nineteen thirties windows. They were cracked with holes in them. They were single pane. They didn't close all the way. I've got a family. My first order of business was insulating as much as I could by replacing those windows with new ones. Um, so that's essentially the work that was done originally. Now, these are obviously, as stated by the city, missteps on my part, right? I broke some rules. I didn't get permits where I should have. My perspective, these were inadvertent missteps. I was unaware of when I needed permits. I got permits where I was aware of it and just wasn't advised any differently at the time, right? Now, we are where we are. Um, this happened at the beginning of two thousand and twenty, right? I bought the home at the end of two thousand and nineteen. Beginning of two thousand and twenty, we immediately started work on it. And that's when all this was done. That's when the building permit was, or uh, the permit was uh, applied for, for the driveway. I think it was January. Uh, and so that's when it was done. Now, fast forward one year into April, two thousand and twenty one, I actually go to the city with my proposal, about a fully baked proposal, but a proposal of, hey, I want to add on to the house now. I'm ready. Um, as part of that, I said, there's going to be some, um, some hoops to jump through in terms of the. some hoops to jump through in terms of the additional steps for a structure of merit to get those different approvals and so on and so forth. I was upfront about some of the work that I had already did. I said, I already restuccoed this thing. I added some windows. I don't think it was necessarily clear when I first started those conversations exactly what the difference in aesthetic was. But again, I was upfront about what I already did. And, you know, not much was brought up as a result of that. However, at that time, I had also asked, it was a different planner, what do I got to do to get this thing off of the inventory? It's going to be a huge pain to go through. I'd rather just not. There's no benefit to me whatsoever. I'd rather take it off the list. I talked with the planner. I talked with actually the city manager. I talked with the city council about what I could do to it. Everybody had effectively said, you can't do that. You've got to go through a number of boards. You've got to pay an exorbitant amount of money to even go through this process in the first place. And there's no guarantee whatsoever that you could actually do it. Now, in September, when I actually fully baked my plans to add on to it and presented those, that's when the city saw, hey, this is a little bit more than we thought it happened. And the city is actually recommending that it be rescinded from the inventory. At that point in September, it wasn't me saying, hey, take this thing off. It was me saying, I'm willing to play ball. And I've made my addition plans with respect to the historic board and their guidelines. The city said, no, 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 this has got to come off the list because it's lost its integrity. Now, I'm in favor of that as well. It's what I originally wanted. So what we have here is part of the resolution or effectively two components, one of which is the rescission of the inventory, right? Take it off the list. The other is the fee component. So let's talk about both of those. In terms of the rescission, now, when we talk about what are the cons of rescinding this from the inventory, meaning effectively, what do I get if I stay as a as a structure of merit? Nothing. It is a, is my realtor wife, and she became a realtor after we bought this house, someone inspired by the events of our terrible representation. As my wife will tell you, owning a structure of merit actually diminishes the property value. Had it, had it not been a structured merit at the time, this is a fourteen thousand square foot property, it could have been subdivided by a developer. And, you know, flip for way more money than I could have could have afforded. I would have been priced out of the market. It diminishes the value of the home. Because it's harder for anybody to do anything with it. That's not an advantage to me, of course. The other is that the city does contemplate one thing called the Mills Act. That is an act that is provided to or that is set forth to provide a tax date, a tax break. Effectively, the city is trying to subsidize some of the property tax for historic homeowners with the intent of, okay, whatever money I've saved and I'm not paying back to the government, I should pour back into the house in order to maintain it and kind of keep its integrity, right? The city, being the small humble city that we are, has about ten spots on the Mills Act where they can actually afford to subsidize a property tax for historic homeowners. There are over a hundred and fifty historic inventor or historic homes in Campbell, meaning we're operating at a less than ten percent efficacy rate in terms of providing any sort of incentive or value to the owners of historic homes.
All right, Mr. Key, I'm just aware of the time. We normally allow five minutes, but since there's not too many people here, I'm willing to hold you in a few more minutes. But if we get to key points, please.
Understood. So there's a number of things within the packet that were set by both Mark Sannival, that were also set by the city. Effectively, what this amounts to is that the city is in favor of rescinding it. The city's historic advisor has recommended and is in favor of rescinding it because this integrity is gone. The historic preservation board, as of last month, is in favor of rescinding it. This is effectively their baby, and they're saying, take it off the list. We no longer want it. That's okay. These are the experts that are saying this should no longer be on the list. I would tend to side with the folks that actually have some skin in the game, right? And they have all, they have all sided with me here. The last thing to talk about is the fees that I mentioned. Now, some of you have brought up the point of, you know, is it, is it, is it the American way, for instance, to actually charge somebody a massive fee like forty five thousand dollars when there is no law to allow for it? I have already been penalized up to the city's ability to penalize. I have paid those fines. I have paid for your time. I have paid for everything up until this point. And the city is asking more money from me now. The quotes that were provided there and by the building official for the actual construction, which were about twenty five grand. Remember, he's reverse engineering the work that I've already done. The windows, the restuccoing, I paid those costs. I know what they actually cost. I don't know how long he's been out of the private sector, but it does not cost twenty five grand to do the work that I did. It is a much smaller fee. That's way overinflated. As far as the architect's additional twenty five grand for him to oversee, restuccoing and adding new windows, also ridiculous. I've paid an architect to add on to double the size of my house and make plans for that. It didn't even cost half of what this guy's asking for. So those are ridiculous, ridiculous amounts. And the point was made that is, you know, is it even relevant?
Again, if I could encourage you to close on this point.
Sure.
So what what fee were were you thinking about?
I'm reasonable. I think the five thousand dollars that the historic board asked for is fair. I made mistakes, albeit I am not legally able to or shouldn't be legally held liable for those because there's no code for it. I'm reasonable. I think five thousand dollars is fine. When you say the funds are not going to the general fund, they are going to the historic board. The historic board got to say, we're good with five grand. We'll take that. That seems good enough for me. Those are the guys benefiting from this. And they say, yeah, take it off the list. Give us five grand. We're cool with that. Forty five thousand is ridiculous. That is
Okay, thank you.
My summary. Feel free to ask questions. I'm happy to answer.
Any questions, Mr. Key?
Sure, yeah. Thanks, Mr. Key. Appreciate all your time. You know, I know it's been a heck of a process for you, but just to be clear. So you did not know it was a structure of merit?
I did know it was a structure of merit. I did not know what was involved in that.
If, now, I I think it's pertinent to the question, so if you had not done any work on the house and come and requested to get rescinded as a structure of merit, so you could do the work and you weren't, and you weren't rescinded, could you have done a a an improvement project that still would have maintained the historical integrity? Do you think, do you think that that could have been done?
Could I, could I ask to be rescinded but denied that request?
Yeah.
Could I have still done?
Could you have still done something, something, not the exact thing, something similar that you would have been happy with? Maintain the historical.
I I don't think it would have been anything that I would have been happy with. Everything I did, I'm very happy with. And as Daniel mentioned, he wouldn't have approved things like taking away the columns, adding that nice arch on the front door.
Okay, would have been a problem. I just wondered for future kind of these issues, you know, I know, how can we, how can we get around these things, but.
Anecdotally, it can take up to twelve months to get approval for historic alterations on a historic house. I mean, that's, these guys will tell you that firsthand. It's it's a long process. And again, not of benefit to them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Chair. So, Mr. Key, are you a general contractor?
No.
Do you, did you hire a contractor to do the work?
Not, not this work, no.
So, so you did it yourself?
No, there's varying degrees of workers out there. For instance, somebody that's simply laying brick or building a stone wall is not a contractor. That's a bricklayer. It's a very low skill job. Same thing as installing windows, right? I could go to Home Depot without a permit and say, hey, can you guys install some windows for me? They'll have some guy that they're paying twenty bucks an hour come out and do it for me. It's four studs and eight screws. It's not hard work.
Right, and I understand that. And the, you know, I have been in construction for over thirty years. You know, I'm a civil engineer. I do this for a living. I built home from scratch. And so the reason they force, you know, us, the city forces us to get a permit is so that they can also inspect the work. So if somebody doesn't have a general contract license or a license, but does this work, that work can be inspected to make sure it was done up to the code. You know, not just for your own sake, but for the city's sake, you know, just make sure minimize the lawsuits, you know. So that's why I was asking, you know, as to how this work was done, because I understand your point, that forty five thousand seems excessive. But then I also understand that, you know, that's, you know, I probably would have arrived at something close to it, but in a different way, not adding design plus construction. As I told, I'll probably say, this is what would have cost their time, so they've cost the attorney's time. You know, the host, the inspector, the consultant, and then you add the penalty so that this doesn't happen again. You know, there must be some sort of a deterrent.
Or, so you bring up a good point, which is precedent, right? What happens if this happens again? Now, as they'll tell you.
Sorry, it might appear I'm picking. Christian Kim call. What was the question?
Question is, I'm, I'm, my concern is that this could become a precedence if we don't, if we don't enforce what the city is requiring, you know, I want his opinion on that.
So, so precedent was brought up by the historic board, and it is a great question to ask. There is potentially a concern for that, or there was previously. But now, what this has done is actually brought light to a hole in the city's ordinance. This has not been contemplated, right? This is a gap that now needs to be plugged, and it will be. The historic board has already started to talk about, okay, what can we do as a disincentive to actually put a fine in the ordinance that allows the city to find folks for what I've done? Now, unfortunately, what I already did has been done. But this is, there is no risk of precedent because this is going to get fixed within the city code in very short order, in just a few months. Right? It's not going to take long to actually.
Okay, thank you. I think, good, understand that. Is does that? That's fine. Thank you. Thank you. Nobody from that side said, vice chair.
I believe you said the original designation said that the applicant could be removed from the historical resource inventory on request. Where was that?
Yeah, that's listed in the, it was the two thousand and twelve historic board meeting minutes that were included in that packet. I can read them off for you. It says, okay, as as long as they're able to withdraw the property from consideration, resolution recommending HRI designation seven oh five L Patio Drive, with the understanding that the property owners of seven oh five L Patio may withdraw their property from consideration with full support of the board. So I don't know if that's a route I can take. Nobody's really taken me up on it to actually just say, hey, can I come off? But that's what's written in this packet, so I was just quoting that.
Thank you. That's page forty three of the packet, top paragraph. Thank you.
Yeah. Some sort of a caveat there.
Thank you. Yeah.
For clarity, I'm just sharing this with my neighbor here. Thank you for your patience. We're all catching up.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll ask a question while we're researching, if that's okay, Chair.
Please.
When, when you restuccoed the building, was that at the exact same, I mean, not exact moment, but like within the same timeframe of the other upgrades, or was that?
It was done at the exact same time.
Were performed and maybe Steph can weigh in if this isn't an appropriate question. What what is it about the stucco that doesn't meet the historic nature of the building? Is it, is it not stuccoed today?
It's a different pattern.
Trial, thank you. And is it, it's entirely different? I can't see in the photo, and I did not visit the site.
Correct.
It's lighter.
And smoother. Okay, thank you.
More contemporary appearance.
Could I, could I ask?
Could I ask one question about the stucco? Team or person, you had do the stucco, would they be able to reapply the stucco in the proper fashion? Or that would require an expert to meet
Yeah.
the historic expectations?
Certainly, and that's been said in the packet, that all of this could be undone to make it look like it was before. But making a replica of a historic thing is not the same as the historic thing, right? So in fact, it'll be a representation. The city simulates that. It's, it could, it could look like it used to be, but wouldn't make it historic again.
Thanks.
That opportunity.
Could I ask the staff an opinion on forty, the first paragraph on forty three of eighty, in particular with seven oh five L Patio Drive?
Unfortunately, this is ten years ago. This is before my involvement in the historic preservation board. The way I read this, this, back in this time, there was very much a often opt out discussion with council and staff in the historic preservation board and really wanting to ensure that homeowners weren't being compelled onto the list. And I believe that's what this is pertaining to in terms of withdrawing their property from consideration up until the point they hit the city council. But we are obviously well past that point. It's now on the list. And this approach has been codified in the city's current historic pres- historic preservation ordinance, which was adopted in two thousand and eighteen. So this actually was under a different ordinance that was less specific about this specific question. Today, as codified, the homeowner does specifically need to provide writing to get onto the list. That was less clear in the past, and so this was more of the practice that had evolved.
Okay, thank you.
So how, how, how big is that homes for area now? How big is the?
Square footage?
Square footage.
Thousand?
It sounds like you had, you have tentative plans, since you have family. Makes sense that you want a bigger house, right? So you talked about, about adding on to it, right? So that that's your ultimate plan is to put some, put some more square footage on it.
Yeah, in in interestingly.
You have, you have a, a large lot, right? So you have room in the back.
Yeah, so the compromise that I offered to the historic board was, look, guys, take me off the list. Give me some of the autonomy that I'm looking for. I'm not going to diminish the value of your list anymore by remaining on it. I will keep things the way it looks. It's still a Spanish style home. It is still in the same style. What they would consider to be major work done to it, I would wager that it's not that major. I mean, we went from a flat, you know, doorway to an arch doorway. It still looks like the same home, in my opinion. I'm happy to keep it the way it is because I'm happy with the work that I was done already. Everything would be to the done, done to the back of the home, not a second story pushed back. It would still look the same for the front.
So I have a question for Daniel on that. It's like, okay, so if, if, if he hadn't made the changes that makes it not, not historical anymore, and but he then came to the city and said, I want to add another thousand fifteen hundred square feet. Is that feasible to do to a historic, historically designated house? Is there a way to do that where you keep the original portion?
There is, and it's very common. And that's actually what he had proposed to do back last year. And that was actually something that we were recommending approval of because the manner in which he was proposing the addition did check all the boxes for how to do it appropriately. Generally speaking, you want the addition to be comparable in design to the original structure, but not identical. This way in the future is clear what is the older historic part and what is the newer addition.
Interestingly, the advisor says in his report, because of the changes that were already made, the historic integrity has been diminished. Also, considering future work that I plan to do, that would continue to diminish the historic integrity of the home. So somewhat paradoxical to really what the intention of the historic board is to help guide me through an addition plan. Our historic advisor says, well, actually adding on to it makes it less and less historic every time we do it. So I don't know that there's a great way.
Yeah. So one other question, Mr. Key. So you, you've said that you knew that it was historically designated. And, and yet you didn't inquire with the city in advance before you made some changes. Is, is that just? You didn't know, you, you didn't understand. I mean, what was the, what was, what was going on there?
Yeah, so for instance, I did go to the city for permits for the driveway. I did ask for permission to build that wall. There was no mention of, hey, this is historic. You should make the wall this kind of texture, right? Now, obviously, if I'm doing the wall, I need the rest of the house to match it. And so nobody said I need a permit to stucco my wall. My thought process was, well, hey, if, if there's no permit required for stucco over here, why do I need a permit for stucco over here? You know, I, I just was unaware, right? I mean, in my, nothing structural was done, right? In my mind, structural things obviously need permit. When I'm talking about building, adding on to the house, of course, that needs a permit.
But you did, you did know it was a historically designated.
Yeah, I just had.
At that time.
I just didn't realize there were.
Come up in the discussion.
Right.
And if I could add as well, a wall of that height, regardless if it's attached to the house, does it require building permits? It does.
Which I went to the planning, uh, department to actually ask for, and the woman at the time advised that it did not. So I went ahead.
Okay, and we have no record of that conversation.
But they were included in the drawings.
Okay, this is, thank you.
I'd recommend the chair, just Robert Charles' order. We've got the public comment period at some point, close the public comment period. I mean, it is getting a bit fluid between staff comments and Mr. Key's comments. It'd be nice to keep the separated. It's not a point counterpoint here.
Yeah. Um, any more questions from? Okay, uh, do we see any questions from, thank you, Mr. Key?
Sure.
That was, uh, very helpful.
Torrance, would you like to speak?
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing and over to the commission. Who would like to start us off? Okay, vice chair.
So, um, this is the second time in my time on the planning commission that I've, uh, run into one of these historic inventory items. In both cases, uh, the person was not aware that they had a historic designation and it caused a tremendous amount of grief for them. I, I, I know it's from the twenty twelve city council report that, um, the previous planning commission, um, says the planning commission questioned if any additional restrictions would be placed on historic resource designated properties. And staff explained that historic resource designation may subject a property to a more detailed design review process consistent with the city's adopted historic residential design guidelines and the Secretary of Interior Standards for Treatment of Historic Structures. But if an owner of a historic resource complies with the adopted design guidelines and standards, project review would be consistent with that of a property not designated as a historic resource. So it makes it sound like you have to tick a few extra boxes, but it doesn't mean that you can't do anything with your, your property, which is clearly not the way it actually worked out. I can certainly understand if we want to, you know, put in significant fines for alterations to historic properties, although it does trouble me the idea that people could have sort of fallen into getting a property listed, um, or not known that a property was listed, which is in this case the realtor's fault, and be subject to what honestly sounds like a tremendous pain. Um, we should discuss that separately when it comes back in front of us. In, in this case, I, I would like, from what I've heard, I would, I would be supportive of a lower fee for this. This does not seem like a reasonable situation. Especially given that it, it looked like reading between the lines, the historic preservation board had a real hard time getting anybody on the street to sign up for getting their, their building listed. And that's, that's my view on this so far.
Thank you. Uh, uh, and maybe I, I should put some context on, on this discussion. I think it's probably two things. One, do, are we in support of rescinding it? And probably the second issue is the fee, right? So maybe those are the two things, unless we've, we bring something up, uh, uh, bring something else up during our discussions. I just wanted.
Add that, yeah, just, just to be clear, I'm in favor of the rescission with a lower fee.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, this was, uh, this was another, another toughie. The one good thing it did is it, it got me to see an, an area of camp. Thirty-four years in Campbell, I didn't even know that area. Oh, my God, it's so beautiful. And, and I will say, and it, and it, and it doesn't matter at all for our discussion, but I think the house is beautiful. It looks great. But I'm not a historic expert and we have, you know, that, that, like most cities, we, we, you know, we're, we're, we're standing up for our historical structures and it's sure great to have them. And, you know, definitely there was a mistake made and, and, you know, I think, uh, you know, I think it's, I think it's pretty reasonable that, uh, well, let me say, if I happen to own a structure of merit house, I would be, anytime I want to do any work on it, I would be so careful. I'd make sure I go to the city five or six times and make sure, because I know that there's extra steps to hit. The thing that's still murky to me about the whole historic preservation process though is, you know, if, if owners don't want to do it, they're in a house and it's kind of historic. But they don't want that because of the, uh, and I do think it's more of a handicap than anything else. Maybe it lowered the price when, when the keys bought the houses and it has a, has a factor, who knows? But, you know, I think we definitely got to take the experts advice. I think we definitely want to rescind structure of merit, uh, designation now after the work that, that really kind of, uh, ruined, ruined that. And, uh, you know, I know we're not talking about fine. We've, we've got to get, we've got to get this straightened in our code. I mean, so we don't have this issue where it's iffy. I would also be in favor of the city, and I know it's another cost, but, you know, every year or two years, they should send a postcard to every owner of a structure of merit or a landmark building and just remind them, hey, by being this, you've got to do A, B, and C, and just try to avoid these kind of issues. The thing that really hit me when I went through the staff report, I, 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 I was really surprised when I saw the historic preservation board's minutes and that, uh, that they seemed to be, you know, uh, or that they were recommending only a five thousand dollar in lieu fee instead of the forty-five thousand that the, that the city staff is recommending after they got, you know, expert opinion and lowered it by fifteen percent, you know, took a little contingency. So I think, uh, you know, we might want to debate among us forty-five thousand or five thousand. I think there definitely should be an in lieu fee. It will help, help our historic preservation efforts in the future. Uh, you know, we got to sense, I guess, some kind of a message and hopefully the code will be, be straightened out. I, you know, I gotta say that I, I'm also kind of empathizing with the owner again in this whole situation, because we don't, we don't have it spelled out like it should be spelled out. The owner admits that they messed up and I, and I, you know, I think they definitely did. You know, what that in lieu fee should be, I, I don't know, but I, I guess the five thousand that the historic preservation board was recommending would be something that I would be okay with. But I'm happy to hear, uh, any arguments for forty-five or, or higher, but, uh, that's kind of what I'm leaning. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as far as the question of rescission, I agree that it should be rescinded. When it comes to the fee, um, uh, like Commissioner Craig said, it's a, it's a toughie. I, um, I'm probably on the other side of the spectrum, if you will. Um, and the biggest issue I have is the so-called precedence and sort of an out of town developer watching this proceedings and, hey, I only paid five thousand. Makes it worth it. You know, let's go buy historic homes and pay the five thousand fee and do what we want to do, you know? That's, that's the problem I have with the issue. Um, it's forty-five thousand, ridiculously large. Probably is, but sometimes that's what it takes to send the message. We can't, we can't, you know, let this happen, you know? So, um, would it make sense to lower the fee a bit? Yes, you know, I think he did a great job with the house, with the construction, you know? I understand historic issue aside, you know, I do want to give him credit for that. He bettered the neighborhood, in, in my opinion, too. But, you know, I think five thousand is too low. I think, um, I would advocate for, I don't know, forty thousand, you know, that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner.
It's interesting to have heard two perspectives, uh, of similar but varying quantity. I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. Obviously, the applicant and the, what appears to be from the historic board is a, a rescind, so that seems straightforward. I think there's some parity there. The, the fee seems astronomical to me and I wonder, I have a question for staff as part of this. When, when you do construction, you get multiple bids and I only saw the bid from the architect and the building official. Is there, is there a process or were there any other bids prepared in this process?
Well, in terms of the building officials estimate, I mean, that would be the valuation. So when you obtain a building permit, you pay fees on the valuation, the cost of the work. Now, obviously, there's wide range of costs that an individual contractor may charge you. And for that reason, the building department uses a standardized valuation table to minimize that variation from contact contractor. So his estimate is based on that. So that would be that consistent number. But in terms of a soft cost estimate, arguably, our different architects could come up with different values as well. And if the planning commission wants additional estimates, then we will need to find some mechanism to compel the applicant to pay for those estimates.
Yeah, understood. Um, one of the numbers was, you know, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole of debating numbers, because it sounds like we'd need another estimate, but one of them was the twelve thousand dollars to restuckle the house. And I don't know what it, I have no idea what that would cost, but it did seem a little high for stucco, but again, I have no idea. I'm not an expert in that industry. Back, back to the dies are, are my comments is, I, I feel that the historic board weighed in, um, and passed it forward through this process back to staff of five thousand. So I'm, I'm, I do understand the precedent comment that Commissioner Kamkar raised, and that is true. Five thousand is small in the scheme of knocking over buildings, but in the scheme of someone living in their house and in, in having the comfort and safety of their own house, forty-five is, is pretty high, even in this world where everything's, you know, very expensive or evaluations are very high. So I, I'm tending to lean more towards the five thousand range, but that's not a final number. I'm happy to hear what fellow commissioners think.
Commissioners.
Yeah, when I looked at this, I was going, well, this is interesting. Um, there's more to it than, uh, it seems at first glance. So, uh, I, yeah, I wouldn't second guess the H R B in terms of rescinding it. So I'm in agreement with the rest of commissioners. And, and the commissioners have made some really good points as well as the, uh, Mr. Key. I, I mean, the one thing that bothers me about Mr. Key's position is that, uh, it sounds like he knew there was, um, it was a heritage home on the list, but didn't inquire with the city as to, um, what that involves in terms of making, uh, changes when he submitted. So, uh, you know, I, I, I'll, I guess I should assume that that's just as an oversight on his part. Uh, not understanding that there's, there's implications. But, um, I'm also bothered by the fact the city doesn't have a codified system. Uh, and, and I don't know if we should be, um, um, u- using this particular situation to, um, come up with something that isn't really properly codified in terms of a fee, which should be a fine. But so, so I'm not convinced of the concept of using the, an estimate of what it would take to replay, restore it as the right number. Whether it's, whether forty-five thousand is the right number or not, I would question whether or not that's the right way to look at it at all. I, I don't know what the alternative is, but there should be a, uh, per Commissioner Cancar's comments. I think in the future, there should be a codified method for us to deter, um, uh, uh, the people coming in and, and, you know, going, well, yeah, I can afford a five grand or ten grand or whatever and, and we'll wipe it out, you know, we'll start all over. So I, I think there needs to be, the city needs to work on something that has a strong deterrence in the future. I don't think we should be, um, penalizing the owner, uh, with, with, uh, something that we, that's come up with, I think the forty-five, the forty-five thousand really struck me as a lot of money. And so, um, I, I would encourage the city to look at, uh, a more formalized way of dealing with these kind of issues. I think it probably, since we have a lot of houses on the list, and they're probably mostly cottage sized homes, I'm assuming. They've built nineteen thirty, uh, this, this colonial revival style. We, uh, you know, throughout the valley, there's a lot of these kind of, um, cottage sized places. I have friends in Will Glen that have exactly that. It's not as historical, it's not historical, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's a colonial revival and they added on to it. So, so there's, this is a common thing and, and with the cost of housing and, and families wanting to live in something more than a thousand square feet, it's not, we're not, we're probably going to see this again, I suspect. So, you know, my, my take would be, I think there should be a fee. I, I, I wouldn't, you know, if, if H R B came up with five thousand dollars, I, I, I wouldn't necessarily think of, uh, you know, uh, it would be arbitrary for me to pick another number. And so, uh, I'd be supportive of a five thousand dollar fee, um, uh, along with rescinding.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Could I, could I ask, um, Daniel a question, please? If this wasn't listed and the changes we've missed, Mr. Key has done to the house on, on a normal basis, you'd be paying building permit fees, wouldn't you?
Correct.
Do we have any idea how much should have been paid to do the building permit fees?
I don't have that number in front of me, but it would be.
It would be nominal.
Oh, yeah. Were those paid? I'm sorry. Were those paid as part of this lengthy process?
No, we, well, we cannot issue him a building permit because the work that he's done is not allowed.
Right. I, I'm just thinking, uh, I reached the, the city at a new bathroom and it seemed to be quite a lot of fees I had to pay for that. So I was thinking, this sounded like it might actually be quite substantial, just having the permitting fees. But you said, it sounds like it is, is not, not, wouldn't be too much as a guestimate.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, the first chair.
Of course. Um, my, my opinion hasn't changed from earlier, but just going forward, um, it was mentioned that historic um, designation depresses the value of a house. And the fine for getting out of historic designation might be designed to capture some of that additional value created when it's removed. I don't generally subscribe to that idea, but that's probably a reasonable way to do that. Just wanted to throw that idea out there for the future.
I'll just add, and I know you're in deliberations. Um, and I'll say number one, uh, the review of historic buildings and their value is a very subjective category. Uh, number two, there are a lot of case studies where historic designations can add value. If you look at the Bungalow District in Pasadena and some others, uh, they're unique, but that's not always the case and might not be the case here. So it is, it is a subjective category. There's cases where it's at value, it had it not. The last I'll mention is the area where an applicant can get added value is the Mills Act. Um, and in many jurisdictions, Mills Act contracts, uh, it's a broader program where anyone who's an historic resource can sign up uh, in this jurisdiction. It is limited to ten as the, as the owner has, has, has mentioned. But often being designated horse historic resource can provide an avenue to the Mills Act, which reduces your property tax. And that's a financial incentive. So anyways, just wanted to add that into your deliberations.
Thank you.
A question, Chair. Um, so those, so those Mills Act, do those ten change every year? Or once a house gets it, gets to keep it, you know?
So we currently have, um, eight signed contracts. We have three that have also been approved. Uh, we actually did have a situation where the council allowed that in eleventh. Uh, those last three haven't been fully executed. The existing eight currently are effectively perpetual. Every single year, they automatically renew for one additional year. Now, the last three that were approved, however, by the city council will terminate in ten years.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one question right there for Daniel, just to follow up on Commissioner Zister and Campcar as well. But ju- just to be clear, so I saw it in your staff report, but the staff is, is asking the city council to, in fact, codify.
Correct.
So cases. So hopefully, maybe this will never come up again, at least in this context. If, if they, if the city council can move quickly on that, which I would ask them to do.
Correct. So the intent here is to, as part of this, um, this issue, ask city council authorization to prepare Arizona Code Amendment that would create some sort of, uh, fine mechanism. I mean, comparable to how we deal with the legal removal of protected trees.
Just, just, um, yeah, I would have been more bothered by this if if I thought if this was really a a historical district in terms of, you know, when I went over there, it's like, okay, there was this house here and then walked down the street and there was another colonial style a block and a half away, but it wasn't something where you would look like in Pasadena, for example, and see, you know, it clearly is a, you know, homes that have been from all 1930s and and have a similar look and architectural feel. So I'm less bothered by it simply because I guess if it were more of a district feel to it in that respect, I would have been more concerned about this, you know, happening and then having to rescind it. So just wanted to add that.
I'll just respond to that, that I completely agree, but our only our only historic district is Alice Avenue. It's the only one we have.
Along those lines, may I speak, sorry, Chair? Along those lines, subjectively, the owner didn't tear his house down and build a modern bungalow. He retained the style of the home. Yes, wrong. Didn't follow the process, didn't request permits. But I would say that the intent wasn't to trick the city out of this and, you know, oh, I tore it down too bad. So sad. It was an error in judgment. So I think that if we were at, you know, hypothetically, you know, if somebody came and said, well, I tore the house down and now it's $700,000 to recreate, are we going to then assess a fine of $700,000? That's just food for thought.
Okay, thank you. What I'd like to do is just recap on the two things here. One, my understanding of where we are with the rescinding and then on the fee size aside. So from what I'm hearing here, all the commissioners are in favor of rescinding. Now, in terms of my little notes here on where people are with fees, Commissioner Cray is, and correct me if I've got this wrong, is supporting a 5K fee. Commissioner Kamkar, a 40K. Okay. Commissioner Zissler, 5 5K. And then I think Commissioner Rivlin wanted to hear, so I don't know whether.
Yeah, I I was taking guidance from the HRB. And they proposed that, knowing that the city was also still asking at that early stage for 45,000. They followed that with their motion, which includes 5,000. And then I would say that I would support 5,000, but they all building fees, all processing fees, nothing else could be waived. I don't think the city would, but this wouldn't count towards any any other operational costs. Any of this, you know, hearing this evening, all those should still be paid. This wouldn't be a deposit towards any of that. This would be a in lieu fee. I think that's clear, but just making sure that that would be my point of view.
Thank you. And then Vice Chair.
I concur with Commissioner Brooklyn, 5,000.
Okay, okay. On my two pennies, I actually agree with Commissioner Zissler on his type of opening comments. I think this, I I I prove what the staff are trying to do to try and get, you know, stop a president. You know, for whatever reason, alterations were made, which shouldn't be made. But actually, I think it's a failing in the city in that we haven't qualified this. And we're using a vehicle which personally I feel a bit uncomfortable with in setting a fine size where that's not really what I I personally think, make me wrong here, that the the mechanism is nice. I I type of I understand where the staff is coming from. I'm not necessarily I I mind about the mechanism that we're trying to do here. So type of replicating or echoing Commissioner Zissler's comments here. So if I felt differently, I would go for higher fine. But I would go with the rest of the majority here of the commissioners on the 5K. Commissioner Rivlin, you I think you you're lit up.
You you answered. I was actually curious where you were going to go, but you finished your thought. So thank you.
Please. I'll try a motion and we'll see, use it for okay with that. And let's just, I'll I'll move that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution reference attachment A recommending that the city council at a future meeting to be determined, rescind the designation of 705 El Patio Drive as a structure of merit from the Campbell Historic Resource Inventory, subject to a payment of of a $5,000 fee in lieu of property restoration and all applicable permit fees.
Second. I'll second that motion. Thank you, Commissioner. And Madam Clark.
Commissioner Rivlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Zisser?
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar?
No.
Commissioner Cray?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bookbinder?
Aye.
Chair Ching.
Aye. So that's carried five to one to the city council meeting on the 10th, is it? No, no, it can't be the 10th. Yeah, I was going to say. The next 24th, June 21st, June 21st. Thank you.
Chair, just one comment. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to say after the item's been closed, but I do agree that the city council should in haste, create a mechanism or create a a process that staff can work with to prevent future confusion in this kind of realm.
Yeah, I I inform what I'm hearing from the other commissioners. I think we all concur on that. We strongly suggest that to the council. So thank you. So that was the last of the items here. So I'll move on to the report of Community Development Director.
Sure, Robbie Stun. Just a quick acknowledgement of roles and responsibilities that city council would authorize the ordinance. Folks sitting at this table will be the ones writing it, so that the haste would probably be directed at staff and that authorization happens, we'll put it on our work plan and try and get it done as soon as possible. So we do have some good case studies Daniel found from Berlin Game, San Francisco and others that have dealt with this issue. Oftentimes, it is after the fact that cities realize they have this hole in the ordinance, but it's something to learn from. Just a few notes. So last night, in all your seats in this chamber, the city council met to review the housing element. This was the the housing policies that you had reviewed last Wednesday. We had passed that on with your recommendations. Looking at my notes, didn't see anything significant in terms of council direction that was different from the planning commission. There were a few notes on adding and changing a few things in some of the programs regarding parking, I think in the affordable housing overly zone, but but no real significant deviation from the recommendations you had. So with that, I wanted to memorialize that that concludes, I think, about seven meetings, both for the commission and council on the housing element starting in October last year. And so again, congratulations on getting through that. At this point, it goes to staff. We take the next two weeks to put everything in a draft housing element. We're anticipating that'll be published later this month. It'll go out for a 30 day public review period, after which we'll send it to the state and the state has a 90 day review period to provide comments. So we'll go dark for a while on on interactions with wishing council. After all that feedback, we'd come back based on the feedback we get. There are probably some adjustments in policies and programs, and that will start up again in the September, October timeframe. But after a marathon effort, again, congrats on on getting through all that. Just a few last notes. Training. So there's a October training from the League of California Cities that looks pretty good. I'll work with our staff to push that out to you if you'd like to sign up. That's on October 7th. And then I'm watching really closely the Fall California Chapter APA Conference. Looks like it's going to happen in person, a novelty again. It's down in Anaheim and a great opportunity if you haven't been to one of those conferences and you have budget for a few of you to to go down. So as soon as that opens up, we we'll do a poll. If any of you would like to travel down to Anaheim to attend one of those conferences. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Just real quick. Previously, the commission, the Community Development Director's report was at the end of the agenda. I haven't seen it there for a while. Are we gonna see that again?
You are, yeah. Unfortunately, I'll chalk it up to us doing too many things at once. It's fallen off my work plan, so I'm committed to to get that back into the packet. So it is expected. I'll you'll start to see that again in your future reports.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll adjourn the the meeting till the next planning commission meeting on May the 24th. Thank you. Good night.